I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Surza, would you please take the roll?
Uh, here.
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 Here. Item 1.2, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, please?
Ma'am Chair, go ahead. Ma'am Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are there none, Ms. Surza?
Aye.
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 Aye. And before I pass this on to item 2.0, the budget discussion, I would like to pass it to Mr. Kelly and then Ms. Cook to read a statement.
Ma'am Chair, as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year nineteen to twenty, no, twenty to twenty-one school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public's interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2021 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public's interest.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first budget workshop for fiscal year 21. This evening, Ms. Yuen, our Chief Financial Officer will take us through a high-level look at the preliminary budget outlook with lots of details along the way. Ms. Yuen, I'm going to hand straight over to you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, we will be presenting and discussing preliminary information related to the fiscal year 21 operating budget. As we go through the presentation, other members from the senior leadership team may be joining us and sharing information from their respective areas. If at any time you have a comment or question, please feel free to interject. As an overview of the items we'll be reviewing this afternoon, first will be background information related to the requirements for developing the budget, and I'll provide a brief overview of the budget process to date. We will review information related to the local composite index and how they have changed for the new biennium. We'll review the historical enrollment information as well as the future think projection for next year. We will then take a preliminary look at the revenue based on Governor Northam's budget, as well as review mandatory operating expenditure increases. We'll then summarize everything that we've presented this afternoon and go over our next steps. There are a couple of state code sections that apply to school divisions. The first one is Code Section 15.2-2503, time for preparation and approval of budget and contents. This code section requires that on or before April 1st each year, we must approve a budget of needs to pass on to our governing bodies, both Williamsburg and James City County. So between now and April 1st, we must determine what our needs are to continue moving the division forward and the level of funding that will be necessary to support those needs. Second State Code Section 22.1-92, estimate of monies needed for public schools, requires the superintendent, with the approval of the school board, to provide an estimate of the amount of money that is considered to be needed to support the public schools in the division, and that the budget must be set up by each major classification or category that has been prescribed by the Board of Education. We use our strategic plans, principles, and priorities to guide the development of the budget, to ensure that the budget aligns with the goals of our strategic plan, and that it supports the needs and goals of the school division, taking into consideration the input of our stakeholders. As we did last year, we will show the alignment with the goals of Elevate Beyond Excellence for the budget increases at our next budget work session on January 21st. In the October-November timeframe, we began collecting input from each school principal and each department administrator for the operating budget. At that time, they entered their requests into our financial system. We then met with each department individually to discuss their requests and determine their needs. In December, we began discussing and evaluating the cost center requests with the superintendent's senior leadership team to ensure that what we present to you is indicative of necessity. This process will continue throughout this month as we will share additional information with you at the next budget work session on January 21st. We are presenting the items that were determined to be necessary to the division so that we may gather your opinion as to how those needs should be prioritized into a final budget request. The Local Composite Index, or LCI, is the state's measurement of each locality's ability to pay for public education. The formula takes into consideration the changes in property values and taxes, the local income and retail sales, and compares it to that for the entire state. Each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of forty-five percent and an overall state share of fifty-five percent. Much of our funding is derived from a per pupil cost multiplied by one minus the composite index. So the lower the composite index results in more state funding, while a higher composite index would result in less state funding. The LCI is supposed to be an indicator of the wealth of the locality. If it goes up, the locality is deemed to have increased wealth and will be able to provide additional funding to support its programs. The LCI is updated at the start of each biennium. Since our school division serves two localities, we have two LCIs, both of which have decreased for the new biennium. The city of Williamsburg's has changed from .7703 to .7459, and James City County's is decreasing from .5657 to .5553 for the 2020-2022 biennium. This change in our LCIs accounts for approximately $1 million of increased state revenue. This chart is a historical view of the local composite index from 2003 through 2022. Williamsburg has changed from a consistent .8 for several years and has gradually dropped to .7459. James City County has been more volatile and has fluctuated from .6228 in 2003, dropping to .5286 in 2009 at the beginning of the recession, and is somewhat stable right now around .56, with the next biennium being at .5553.
Yuen, at some point, can we get a breakdown between, you told us a million, but could you allocate that to each LCI, the breakdown? Thank you.
.8 the maximum you can have?
Yes. Yes, .8 is the maximum.
I'm sorry, one question is with these LCIs, so better Northern Virginia gets, the higher Northern Virginia's property values are, would necessarily make our property or our LCI?
Potentially.
Because it's not like our locality's property values or whatever have gone down. It's more an issue of what's happening in Northern Virginia.
And I think we expected a slight shift this year because of that, and that's what you're seeing in the numbers for both parts of our locality. Absolutely.
Now, we will move into a review of enrollment information and the projection for next fiscal year, which will be used to develop our fiscal year 21 budget. Enrollment is based on our September 30th student count each year. For the current school year, our enrollment is 11,448. The future think projection for next school year is 11,389, or a decrease of 59 students. As we look back over the past 10 years, you can see that in fiscal year 2011, the division's enrollment was at 10,549 and has grown by 777 students as of September 30th, 2019. Since 1718, our enrollment has declined slightly each year and is expected to continue with a decline again next year by 59 students. Again, this is based on the future think low enrollment projection, and the low projection has been within 1% each year. We use the low projection as we do not want to overestimate enrollment since much of our state funding is contingent upon the number of students enrolled, and if it is overestimated, the risk of a budgetary shortfall would be increased. I would also like to mention that these enrollment numbers do not include preschool students, which totals 395 each year. This slide shows how our enrollment by level has fluctuated slightly, but has shown steady slow growth over the last decade. In 2011, the elementary schools had 4,712 students and have grown by 307 students as of 2019, and expected to gain 12 students next year. In 2011, the high schools had 3,399 students and have grown by 375 students in 2019, but are expected to lose about 56 students next year. In 2011, the middle schools had 2,560 students and have grown by 95 students and expected to lose 15 students next year. And again, a reminder, these numbers are from the future think low projection, but preschool students are not included in the elementary numbers. Now, I'll move on into revenue. This will be a first look at our estimated state revenue based on Governor Northam's introduced budget. This is all preliminary information based on the governor's budget that could change based on action by the General Assembly. I would also add that we are only looking at state revenue this afternoon, as we do not have any preliminary information from the localities at this point as we did last year. Governor Northam's introduced budget includes the following. First, the introduced budget reflects the most recent estimates of sales tax revenue dedicated to public education. The estimates include both the 1% and the 1/8% portion that are appropriated for distribution to school divisions based on school age population. It is projected that we will see an increase of 659,580 in fiscal year 21 related to sales tax. Second, technical re-benchmarking updates to the Standards of Quality, or SOQ, incentive, categorical, and lottery-funded accounts for salary, prevailing support costs, enrollment projections, and other technical updates, as well as various proposed policy changes. Re-benchmark budget represents the state cost of continuing direct aid programs into the next biennium with updates to the input data, like average salaries, used in the funding formulas that determine the cost of the programs. Since 90% of state direct aid funding is for SOQ programs, SOQ funding is most impacted by the re-benchmarking process. As you can see from this table, our estimated increase in SOQ funding is $4,581,678. Our categorical and incentive state revenues will see a decrease of 579,958 next year. This is primarily related to the compensation supplement that we are receiving in fiscal year 20. The fiscal year 21 state budget introduced by Governor Northam does not include a compensation supplement. We will go into further detail regarding this in a future slide. In this area of state revenue, there is also a new funding source for a games of skill per pupil amount, which amounts to approximately $350,000 for us, that is contingent upon the passage of legislation by the 2020 General Assembly. The other changes in this area are a result of re-benchmarking, as well as the change in our LCIs. Additionally, the following key recommendations impacting public education are also included in the governor's budget. The recomputation of local composite indices for the 2020-2022 biennium, updating sales tax and lottery revenue estimates dedicated to public education, revisions to the employer rates for VRS contributions, the state share of a 3% compensation supplement effective on July 1st, 2021, an additional state funding for Virginia preschool initiative and early childhood education, school counselors, funds to support students who are educationally at risk, to support English language learners, and the new games of skill per pupil funding allocation previously mentioned. Overall, we are looking at a total increase in state funding of approximately $4.6 million, or 9.5% over our current fiscal year 20 budget.
So the list that you just went through, games of scale, VPI, you're going to enumerate that one by one later on in the presentation, or is it now the time to ask those questions?
You can ask now if you'd like.
I will in just a second.
Okay.
Overall, is this the governor's proposed budget, is that generally best-case scenario? Like, historically speaking, when we're looking at, it's not going to get better than this, better than $4.6 million in all likelihood?
In all likelihood.
Extremely unlikely to go up, but more often will not be as much. Hard to predict this year.
And then you mentioned that we don't have information from the localities typically at this time of year. Do we in the first year of a biennium budget from James City County? I mean...
I don't believe we do.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then my question about the games of skill, are there any, is that an unfunded mandate? I mean, well, clearly partially, is it a partially funded mandate? Let me rephrase that. It's going to cost us more to do whatever that is than...
No, they, it does not require a local match.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we will take a look at mandatory operating expenditure increases. The governor's introduced budget provides a 3% salary increase in the second year of the biennium, fiscal year 22, with an effective date of July 1st, 2021, for funded SOQ instructional support positions. Divisions will have to certify that a 3% average salary increase has been provided during that biennium, either in the first year or in the second year, or through a combination of the two years. For WJCC, every 1% of salary increase costs the division approximately $1 million. The governor's introduced budget proposes higher employer contribution rates for instructional retirement benefits in fiscal years 21 and 22. The rates will increase by .97% and will cost approximately $850,000. As we look at salary increases, we'll want to consider our competitiveness for attracting and retaining staff. Mr. Baker presented information to you previously in November regarding our current rankings out of nine regional school divisions. We are currently ranked sixth in bachelor's entry-level salary for teachers and ninth in master's entry-level salaries. If we do not provide more of a salary increase than other divisions, we will not move up in these rankings. Introduced budget increases state funding in the SOQ for school counselors in fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22. Current staffing standards for school counselors are 455 to 1 for elementary, 370 to 1 for middle, and 325 to 1 for high. The governor's introduced budget reduces the staffing ratio in fiscal year 21 to 375 to 1 in elementary, 325 to 1 in middle, and 300 to 1 in high. Then in fiscal year 22, there will be additional reductions of all funded staffing ratios to 250 to 1. For us to meet the ratios for fiscal year 21, we would not need to add additional staff, but for us to move to a 250 to 1 ratio in fiscal year 22, we would need to add a total of 11 FTEs. We are proposing to add six counselors in fiscal year 21 and then an additional five in fiscal year 22.
And part of the reason for that is because if we were to go out in the second year and look to try to hire 11 counselors, it would be almost impossible because of the unavailability of them. So the projection that we're, the idea we're having is to hire six the first year and five the second year to meet the governor's proposed ratio.
Ms. Bujor will now join us to present information related to special education.
Before we move on, so just to be clear, to get to 250 to 1 across all three levels, we need 11 new counselors.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. In order to provide context to the special education mandated needs, we will begin by looking at special education population trends. The numbers presented here are based on the December 1 state reporting document, which is used to determine state and federal funding for special education. As you can see, over the past 10 years, the number of students with an identified disability has increased by 385. Students can become newly identified or transfer into our division already identified at any grade level and throughout the year. One area we'd like to use as an example of the growth, where we continue to see a large amount of growth, is in the number of students being identified with a disability prior to kindergarten through our Bright Beginnings program. Looking at Bright Beginnings transition data for last year as compared to where we are right now for this year, we find that in the 2018-2019 year, there were 115 students with an IEP that transitioned to kindergarten. As of today, we have 109 students in Bright Beginnings with an IEP. Between January and March of this year, there are currently 41 eligibility scheduled for Bright Beginnings, 18 of which are age-eligible for kindergarten next year.
Excuse me, you don't have a slide on what you're talking about right now, right?
Just giving you some, no ma'am.
Okay.
And based on past trends, we approximate that there'll be an additional 25 to 30 eligibilities between March and August, and we have no way of anticipating at this time how many of those will also be kindergarten-eligible.
Please, Mrs. Hummel.
25 to 30, expected.
So we don't have a slide. These are moving numbers every day, but they give you a sense of the trend data to suggest where we may end up in kindergarten. But we can certainly provide the information for you.
What you seem to be aiming is like, kind of similar to what we were in 18 and 19, where we had the huge influx of the students.
Correct.
Yeah, that was where I was kind of heading. Was 2018-19 just an anomaly, or that we're anticipating that 2020-2021 could possibly be another humongous jump like that?
It's hard to know, because if you look at the past five years, it's, this has been our smallest year of growth. I mean, we went from 58 to 85, down to 50, up to 151. We have looked closely at last year because that was much larger than we expected. We do know that we had a significant number of transfer-ins. We had 150 students transfer in with an IEP as compared to about 99 who left the division. So we also always know there's an ebb and flow, and we can never anticipate how closely those numbers will match up. But that was a difference of over 50 students there. But we're using Bright Beginnings as an example of how we're seeing the increased growth. It's not the only place, but it's just one of the places where we can capture some specific numbers to help explain the growth.
So has the Bright Beginnings numbers over the past five years been indicative of the change from the previous year?
I only have back to 2017-18 here with me. That was 99 students. So it was 99, 115. Right now, as of today, we know 109. So I would anticipate it to be above 115 by the end of the school year, but I can't.
Right. So, but in 1718, you had round numbers about the same, 99 versus 115, but we saw 100 different additional kids come in in 18 and 19.
Right.
So I'm not sure how good of a marker that is towards predicting where we are.
It's just one example of where we're seeing the growth.
Right.
So that 1934 includes those preschoolers?
It does. Our December 1 count is broken down by 0 to 5, and then 5, actually 0 to 2, and then 3 to 21. So it does include, this slide does include all of our students that are identified with a disability.
If I go back and look at 11389, does include the...
Where are you?
No, it does not. Does not.
No, no, just this slide.
Just this slide, because this is our state reporting requirement.
I guess the question I have is why are they not, is there, are they not included? It's a more realistic number.
Are they not part of the formula that funds us?
Correct, they're not.
Right. So the students that fund us are K through 12, not the pre-K. So what they're showing us there is the number of students that will be considered in the funding criteria from the state.
Right, from the state, yeah. Although the governor is also, that's what I'm, I guess I might quite, he's put a big push on the education of preschool kids, so I'm curious about that.
Yeah, there's a separate funding source for pre-K, and with the governor's budget, there is a huge amount dedicated to pre-K, but we don't know what that's going to look like for individual programs, school divisions.
So that is still out there, and we just don't know what it is, okay?
We know there's a big number, but we don't know how it'll be actually distributed.
Okay. That would, whatever that is, will increase our budget by whatever that amount is, and it will be, or will that be separate? Do we know how they're going to?
We really don't know how they're going to distribute the money. Even with the counselors, we don't know if it'll come in the first year or the second year. We're not quite sure about that either. Still, to provide more details to us.
Thanks.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Bujor, can you go back and explain to me about the 25 to 30 students? You, I kind of missed that part, but you were talking about between now and August, we expect to have 25 to 30 more students eligible for sped. Is that right?
We expect them to go through eligibility. We can't predetermine. So looking at just Bright Beginnings, not our total number of eligibilities, but we were using Bright Beginnings as an example of where we're seeing some of the growth, because we can't quantify transfers in from year to year. We can't, so this was a number... We can't, so this was a number we could give as an example where we're seeing some pretty consistent growth. Right now, as of today, we have 109 students in Bright Beginnings identified with an IEP. We know between now and March, they're having 18 eligibilities for students that will be kindergarten age eligible for next school year. So that's potentially 18 more students to add to that 109. What we don't know yet is how many there might be between March and August. But looking at previous year's data, it's averaged around 25 to 30. So we're just trying to give that between now and next September, what might that look like just at the kindergarten level as far as the number of students entering the K-12 portion of our program?
Thank you for that clarification.
Ms. Bouchard, just additional further clarification. So right now, we have 109 pre-K students have an IEP. How many total kids, students in pre-K do we have right now?
I don't have a number.
Is it, are we at 395?
395.
We have 395 spots, but are we, are we at 395?
Yeah, it's growing slowly towards that. It will hit that.
Because then my next question was, and maybe just historically, what is the split? About 60% of the 395 are students with IEPs?
Historically, that's my understanding.
That's correct, it's 60-40 right now.
60-40. And then, do we know, we're looking back at 18-19, the 151 students, do we know how many of those 151 were pre-K students with an IEP?
I can tell you that there were 115, well, as of the end of the year. It's difficult to know because that December 1 thing is a snapshot in time, and then we continue to have eligibilities. So remember that the 109, it's hard to say what percentage that is of the 60% because this is just the students that'll be kindergarten eligible next year. We have three-year-olds with IEPs, we have two-year-olds with IEPs, so they're not part of that 109. There are 109 students at Bright Beginnings that are four and will be eligible for kindergarten next year.
Okay, so we may have, so we have more pre-K.
Than 109 students in Bright Beginnings with an IEP.
That have IEPs.
Correct.
That's just the four-year-olds.
These are just, correct, these are just the four-year-olds.
But we're not at 395 yet total, but we will by the end of the year.
And we'll, we'll keep you apprised of the, the data as it becomes available and the, the numbers increase so we get a sent, a real sense of, of numbers for next year as much as we can because it's a daily changing process. Dr. Biese, in response to your question about pre-K, Governor Northam had 94.8 million in, in his budget for pre-K. So there's a, a huge resource there that we're not sure how we can tap into that yet.
I'm not sure they know either yet, so.
Just looking at this slide, recognizing that there's growth in the special ed population, I wonder if at some point, it would be helpful for me to know what percentage that, those numbers represent in that middle column as a percentage of the whole population, the whole division population, because my guess is, is that this percentage of special ed students in the division has been slowly increasing over time. And it would be good to know that.
I actually just figured that out for 2019-20.
Oh, would you share it with us?
It's a little over 16% of the, of the student population, which is.
And it would be slightly below that once you take the Bright Beginnings numbers out as compared to the K-12 enrollment, but it's, it's still over 15%. And I think it was probably 14, I think when I came in 2012, it was 14%, so it has increased.
Which is higher than the average.
State average.
Yeah.
So obviously, the staffing that relates directly to our special ed student population, this chart prevents, provides trend data for special education K-12 staffing based on the increased enrollment. Staffing increases are made annually to meet the minimum compliance requirements per the state guidelines in the SOQ.
Thank you for stressing minimum.
Standards of quality and the Virginia regulations establishing standards for accrediting public schools in Virginia establish the maximum caseload staffing requirements for special education services for school-aged children. Caseload standards per teacher or school average per teacher is a maximum of 20 points, except for classrooms serving students with autism, deaf-blindness, or multiple disabilities for more than 50% of the day, in which case the caseload maximum is eight students. This chart indicates that we currently have 11 individual teacher caseloads above SOQ maximums and 16.5 case load, teacher caseloads at capacity. Those are mitigated by the ability to use the building school average. So for instance, if one teacher caseload, a teacher caseload is at 22 and another teacher caseload is at 16, and there's only two special ed teachers in that school, the school average is below 20. And so we are considered in compliance with that minimum standard. So using that, the data presented, the fiscal year 21 positions required are three teacher FTEs. One is a temporary position that has been added this year due to caseload overage at one school. One position is for a new middle school class for students with multiple disabilities, and one position is to address the overages to, to address anticipated increases due to upcoming eligibilities and the current caseload maximums you saw on the previous slide. In addition, two interpreters will be required. One position was added as a temporary position this year to meet an identified student need, and one position is needed to meet service requirements for students transitioning from one school level to another.
Did you say a student's need?
Yes, ma'am.
Like one particular, like one student?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you, if you are hearing impaired and require, require interpretation services, you, you require an interpreter, and students are placed in their home schools.
So these interpreters are for deaf students, not, it's not a?
Sign language, no.
Okay.
It is, it is sign language for deaf or hearing impaired students.
For, okay.
We have some students that are hearing impaired but may not be deaf, but require it in order to access the curriculum.
And so this fluctuates, like, it could drastically fluctuate based on how many students have, are that, hearing impaired and when they come into the system and when they leave.
Correct. This, this is an example, it's unusual to need to, but we do because of specific needs.
And then this is just another question about that. So you hire these interpreters, and then that student leaves, but they are now part of our school system. How do you use them?
We haven't had that luxury yet.
Okay. I just wondered, you know, like, are they, are they multi, they?
I think generally, it's a contracted service as opposed to a hiring because they're extremely difficult to find and hire.
Okay, got it, thank you.
But if we can hire, that would be our preference because of the difference in cost for having a position versus contracted services.
Thank you.
Regarding, this slide is about baseline, what we absolutely need. Any discussion about anything above would take place at another time, is that correct?
Correct. This is, this is again, to meet the minimum compliance requirements based on the standards of quality.
What I was going to ask was, at the next meeting, will, will we have a comparison of like neighboring school divisions in terms of, like, what do their special ed ratios look like compared to ours?
We certainly can try to do that. What's complicated there is you look at our December 1 count, and it says we have so many students, and that's a public record. What I can't tell you is how many, how those students count. So a student counts as 1, 2, or 2.5 points for caseload depending on the percent of time and the level of services they need. And I don't have access to that. So it's very hard to make an accurate comparison across school divisions.
So we, we know that we have minimum standards. Is there, are there best practice that, that says this is in an ideal collaborative classroom, this is what the ratio would look like? Is that information out there somewhere?
Again, it's so individualized based on student needs that I'm not aware of it. We certainly can research that, but.
We can get, I mean, we can figure out that roughly at 16%. That's, is that really that? Because they still have to show total number of special ed kids.
We can certainly do that.
That's rough, because you're right, that you can't tell, you can't tell from that number whether it's a 1, 2, 2, yeah.
This is, that would be helpful.
This is bare minimum.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So it's interesting that our student population, our enrollment is going down by 59 students next year, but our, our needs and inability to, to serve our students with special needs is increasing. So the, when sometimes you look at the overall enrollment, you think, well, why do you need more staff? This is a very specialized area with very specific needs that are becoming very more complex annually, and therefore we, this is a minimum requirement, but we should be doing more.
I assume we're going to move into English language learners later.
Not on this slide, but, but we will at the next meeting. And the reason for that, Mr. Kelly, is it's, it's, we're within SOQ standards, but we will bring the other way of looking at it at our next meeting because it's not an SOQ-driven standard.
That's another population that's growing.
Correct. And we'll be speaking to that at the next meeting.
The, the last set of FTEs that we have on this slide are the three special education teacher assistants. Two of those positions have been added this year as temporary positions to meet IEP requirements, and one position is included for the middle school class that we need to add next year for students with multiple disabilities.
And as Ms. Bouchard will tell you, this is not driven by SOQs, but it's driven by IEP requirements.
And, and finally, the last slide regarding special education has to do with our mandatory increases in contractual services. These increases for the special education cost center are anticipated for mandatory contract services as indicated on this slide. It is important to note that again, these contract services can increase based on identified student needs in the IEP. So this is what we can anticipate as of today.
As an increased cost.
As an increased cost, the current budget for that, for that, for the cost center is $183,000 this year. It will be a total of $250,000 next year.
It's a pretty hefty increase.
Yep. Did we anticipate that in last year's budget, that it was going to be $183,000?
In last year's budget, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just one other, the ASL, the ASL services, is that still kind of unique to that one student?
Well, it's for numerous students, but that covers the contract services.
The increase in these contracts again speak to the severity of the need of students and the increase in that across our school division.
And they're IEP-driven.
Yes, sir.
And the nursing services, you see there are for individual student needs, where they are so medically fragile, that is a, is a, is a requirement to have.
Further questions for Ms. Bouchard?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Landers will now provide some information related to contractual services increases within his department.
Good afternoon, excuse me, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. The Synergy Cloud Hosting line, that is to move our Synergy Student Information System to Edge Point-provided servers and maintenance. This increases our security footprint of the student and staff data and reduces our exposure to cyber threats such as malware by providing additional security layers. We would begin with our WJCC user account security layer, we would then have an added Edge Point vendor-provided security later, layer, as well as Amazon Web Services infrastructure security layer. It also places the burden of recovery in the event of a disaster or attack on the vendor, as well as placing the burden of server maintenance away from WJCC staff to the Edge Point vendor staff. It also removes the cost of maintaining servers locally by approximately $60,000 in hardware purchases every three to four years, as well as approximately $25,000 in related licenses each year. The next line item for increased data storage and backup solutions, this is simply due to our growing electronic storage requirements. It provides additional capacity for our backup capabilities for student and staff assigned and shared data storage. It also increases our recovery capabilities in the event of a disaster or an outage. To give you an idea, our daily backups, our snapshot backups have grown from approximately seven terabytes over the past couple of years to approximately 15 terabytes this year. Primarily, this increase is due to the type of data stored. It's no longer just Word documents, Excel spreadsheets, it is now audio files, video files, multimedia files, as students are starting to build digital portfolios.
So the, your Synergy Cloud Hosting of $46,600, is there, is there a reduction somewhere that to, that's an increase, an increase of that contracted service, but is there, is there a cost avoidance that we're, that we're using somewhere else?
There is a slight cost avoidance in the licenses and, in the Technology Cost Center in our, I believe it was the annual licenses line that dropped a little bit. The hardware, I normally use the ESOL grant money to purchase that hardware, so there wouldn't be anything in the operational budget.
I was just thinking that you were talking about using cloud storage and, and all the, that Edge?
Edge Point.
Edge Point is, is doing, that wouldn't, that wouldn't, wouldn't get payback from there?
Well, we would just be able to use those grant funds in another way.
Okay.
This has been an area of significance this year as other school divisions and companies and others have, have been subject to, to hacks and malware, ransomware and everything else. And so this is, it's additional layers of security that unfortunately we need to protect our system. So it's one of those security areas that we're building our capacity so that we can protect ourselves more fully, especially with the student and family information.
I, I'm fine with that, but I, I don't think that reads clearly here. And, and so my question was going to be, not that I don't support this, but I'd like to better understand why it's mandatory as opposed to, you know, choose to do or not. I'm not sure that that's as clear here, because it would be helpful. We're going to, if we're going to call it mandatory, I think we need to clear that it is mandatory.
And I think the difference is that we have actually have made the shift in our system this year, so it is an additional cost that already exists. So if we were not to do it, we would take something away. Because we've worked, we've built, we've actually gone to the cloud hosting, I think I sent it, information in one of my updates to you earlier this year about moving to cloud hosting for secure reasons. So it becomes part of our annual payment, or else we take that away again.
So it's a contract that we have, and this is just, this is the second year of the contract that has additional cost to it.
Correct.
Correct.
So it's a mandatory contractual increase?
Contractually, right.
Yeah, we didn't have the full cost this year because it was prorated since we moved in the middle of the year.
Yep, right.
But this coming year, we will see the full cost of that.
Right.
But adding the security measures in this would be helpful, that doesn't.
We'll, we'll make sure it's clarified in, in how we present it, so the, the public understands that this is a, an essential piece of our operations. Any other questions for Mr. Landers? Thank you, sir.
Moving on to other increases in contractual services. To address our space needs, we are currently planning to add a trailer at both Stonehouse and Jamestown next year. That anticipated cost totals $435,000, which is comprised of recurring annual costs of $62,000 for the lease and $373,000 in one-time setup costs. Currently, at this point in the budget process, we are estimating a 6% increase in our workers' compensation, general liability, fleet, and property insurances based on the average increase over the last three years, which amounts to $43,875. For our audit contract with Brown Edwards, we are estimating an increase of 3% or $2,100. Risk management services are provided by James City County as part of a shared service, and we are estimating an increase of $5,000 based on current, current year expenditures and past history. For our business analytics contract with Forecast Five, we have added additional functions that will assist with required state and federal reporting for ESSA and our annual school report, as well as budget forecasting, and this increase amounts to $8,800. Our radio maintenance agreement covers the maintenance of all of our emergency radios division-wide, including the bus radios. Next year, there's a scheduled radio system upgrade that accounts for the majority of the increased cost of $62,400.
I have a question about the trailers, and they don't need to be answered tonight. I have two questions, actually. One has to do with timeline, and that is, so if we, the school board adopts that as part of the request, and then that request is approved by the funding localities, then that, then when does the process of going through approvals to get that done? So does this actually happen within that fiscal year, is my, my question? So the cost associated with that, related to timeline? And then also, you know, if you look at the numbers, we have three elementary schools that are above a hundred percent, and so I'm curious why, why only one has a trailer request? And again, I don't need an answer tonight, but I would like an answer to that. And then, that's-
I think Mr. Snipes will address the, the timeline question for you, and then we'll come back with the, the needs of other schools at, at the next meeting.
Because we've known this has been in the works in, of enrollment, we have started the process already of going, like, design and some other, to get those approved. We continue to move forward if not.
So the, the process that you have to go through with the, with the localities, and that would hap, that, it could go to a planning commission before the budget? I would like to see that timeline.
Like to see the timeline, okay.
Yes, thank you.
We can do that.
I, I just have a question about the radio maintenance agreement. Does that, does, that involve some security measures? I mean, because you think of the radio, somebody could possibly listen in on that, but they could also possibly disrupt it. I mean, I'm asking, is there any security measures with that?
Yeah, these, these are the radios that are used for security in all of our buildings that our administrators carry with them to, to contact each other. And as part of this additional cost this year, there's a whole system upgrade to all of our radios. We do have a joint contract, I believe, with the, the, the county.
York, James City County, and Gloucester, Gloucester, are all partner for public service radios, communications system.
You stated also that this was for our buses, right?
Yes. It includes, it includes, the agreement includes being able to communicate.
Is there any fail-safe system involved, like, if somebody was contacted, they would know that that was that actual person?
Questions, I think are questions about security on the radio waves?
Yes, that's exactly-
Are they, are they open, is it open to whoever has a radio in that band, or is there some sort of security level so that they can't?
We can get that answer for, for everyone.
There's certain bands that are used specifically for us, but I'm not sure how those are protected or not known to other people, so we'll certainly get some more information about that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Because I remember when we were out there, you had the capability of knowing where every single bus is, at, at, you know, any moment during the day, yeah, which is really sad to them.
I'm just curious how often these radios are recycled out?
Um, I think it's every, about every fifteen years. We, we have not had an upgrade in, in a while. This is the first upgrade that we-
Fifteen years? And that keeps track with the police department's frequency changes?
Yes.
We all change together. We're all, all using the same type of, of radios for that interconnectivity.
Well, anything that still works for fifteen years.
Or our buses do.
I concede the point, Mr. Snipes.
Um, back to the trailers. Along with the trailers, is there, are there security measures that have been put into place?
In all, in all of our-
Along with, I mean, is that part of the budget?
Yes, along with the, along with the budget, there are, are security measures with cameras and alarms and fire alarms, that is all part of that budget.
They are, of course, still outside of the regular school building.
Not necessarily fenced in.
Correct.
Is this the first trailer that goes at Stonehouse?
Um, this is the first trailer since about two thousand and seven, when we removed some trailers.
So some of the site, the actual sites do exist at Stonehouse and at Jamestown because we previously had trailers at both of the schools.
So the plan is to put them back where the previous trailers were?
Correct.
One.
These are new trailers, they're not-
Yes, no, these were, these are new trailers. We rent trailers when we-
Sir Dahl, we've looked at the renting versus buying over a number of years, and it's more cost-effective to rent because of the timeframe for their usage.
The trailers don't last for fifteen years.
And the maintenance and everything else. By the time they're, we've used them, they're not worth anything to, to purchase.
No questions?
Mr. Baker will now share some information with you related to health insurance.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. Good afternoon. Regarding the health insurance, we are using a conservative estimate of five percent as we prepare for our health insurance renewal. This is a worst-case scenario. We don't have the final numbers yet. We hope to have them soon, but we do believe it'll go down. Last year, our renewal was one-point-five percent, just to kind of-
Go down from five percent?
Yes, sir.
Won't be that much of an increase.
We anticipate it'll be less. We're not done, we're still getting some data for the last couple of months, so-
Right.
We hope to have it even by the next, the next work session. Currently, the school division is paying eighty-two percent of the cost for health insurance, and employees are paying eighteen percent of the cost. Based on the guidance from the board from last year, we're showing a five percent increase here being absorbed by the employee. A five percent increase would change the overall cost share to the employer paying seventy-eight percent and the employees paying twenty-two percent of the cost. We feel we have an excellent product. We have, again, a PPO, a lot of options. Our plan also does include dental and vision for, we believe is a very reasonable price. Not every employee participates in the health insurance program, but we currently have one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-four employees that do participate with our health insurance. Just a reminder, the health insurance does differ than a potential pay raise. If you give a pay raise, then all the employees would receive that advantage, and it potentially could help you with your retirement down the road.
What's the percentage, you said how many of our employers have, use our healthcare, but what is that a percentage of the total number of employees?
Close to, yeah, close to that, so thirteen, almost fourteen hundred currently, currently using it versus-
Fourteen hundred out of nineteen-
About nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred, okay, thank you.
Regarding health insurance, there are options and choices for the employees. We wanted to show you the current cost share for our most popular options. We have a five-hundred-dollar deductible option, or called Key Advantage Five Hundred. On this plan, for the employee-only coverage, the employee's paying twenty-two dollars a month, or about three percent of the cost. We currently have a hundred and twenty employees taking this plan. For employee plus spouse, the employee's paying two-hundred-and-three dollars a month, or about sixteen percent of the cost, and we have approximately thirty employees taking that plan. And then the last plan on the slide is our, our employee plus their family plan, which is two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars a month, or about fourteen percent of the cost, and we have a hundred and ten employees participating in that plan. The next plan I want to talk about is, even if our employees upgrade to the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible plan, they're getting an excellent deal, and this does not cost the school division any more in money because the employee pays that difference. And our two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible plan is by far our most popular plan. So for the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible plan, for the employee only, the employee's paying a hundred-and-three dollars a month, or about fourteen percent of the cost, and we have four-hundred employees who participate in the employee-only option here with the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible. Even as the worst-case scenario that I described with our, with our most popular plan, if we had that shift of the, of the employee taking on, absorbing the healthcare increase, it would change the cost share from fourteen percent to the employee participating at taking eighteen percent of the cost, and it would just be a thirty-eight-dollar-a-month increase from a hundred-and-three dollars a month to a hundred-and-forty-one dollars a month. And again, we have four-hundred employees who take the employee-only option for this key advantage. For the key advantage, two-fifty for the employee plus spouse, they're currently paying three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars a month, or about twenty-five percent of the cost, and we have a hundred and fifty employees doing that. And then for the key advantage, two-fifty for the employee plus their family, and this is our most expensive plan, we have employees paying four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars a month, or about twenty-three percent of the cost, and we have two-hundred-and-eighty-five employees that participate in that plan. We also do have a high deductible plan. We don't have a lot of participation in that. It actually is increasing. We went from twenty-two participants last year to thirty-two participants this year. And right now, for employee only, the employees are paying three percent of the cost. For employee plus one, or employee plus spouse, they're paying five percent of the cost, or fifty-six dollars. Or for their family, they're paying seven percent of the cost. And we have about seventeen employees covering their family this way, and about five covering a spouse, and about ten employees that do just themselves. And again, we don't have a lot of folks that take it because we feel like actually the key advantage five-hundred deductible plan is, is pretty rich, and you can buy into that plan for not much more.
Um, did, last year, we talked about leveling our, the-
For the health savings account.
Right, and so that the contribution, so the employee wasn't getting less money from the division if they chose this.
Correct. You were able to do that? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, to see.
Sure. Sure. And it, yeah, I can give that to you. It's on our health insurance rates. Then, the, the last slide I have is, is, you know, again, overall, we feel we have an excellent product for a very reasonable price, but an item to potentially consider is the employer-employee cost share. And again, our division is currently paying eighty-two percent of the cost, and employees are paying eighteen percent of the cost. And if we did absorb five percent increase, that would switch to seventy-eight percent the employer would be paying, and the employees would be paying twenty-two percent. On this slide, we wanted to kind of compare some of our neighbors to, to a similar product, and it is hard to compare apples to apples, because our plan does include vision and dental. So we try to get comparable to our neighbors for our two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible plan and include division dental and vision for that. So for our employees who participate, and they pay a hundred-and-three dollars a month for employee only for our two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible plan, and on average, the other four, four school divisions up here I have, pay a hundred-and-fifty-five dollars to just cover an employee only. So our employees pay, like I said, again, a hundred-and-three dollars a month, and on average, our neighbors are paying a hundred-and-fifty-five dollars a month. Our employee to cover their spouse, our employees pay three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars a month currently to cover their spouse, and our neighbors, on average, pay five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars to cover their spouse. And then the last family option is our employees currently pay four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars to cover their family, and on average, our neighbors pay six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars to cover their family. And again, the information here we're sharing is just, you know, to our, the healthcare consumers can make a more informed decision regarding cost share and the plan options that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, last year, one of the most helpful pieces of information I got with regard to helping me think about how we approach total compensation as it, as you compare, compare wages and health insurance, because those are really the two things that we have choice about. Everything else, VRS, workers' comp, all that stuff is fixed. So that's the mix that we have, the, the opportunity to shift. And when we looked at total compensation across neighboring divisions, and what percentage of total compensation went to health insurance and what percentage went to wages, we found that we were investing slightly higher percentage in health insurance, which, which is why we decided to hold steady in health insurance and increase wages more. So I, I'd like to see that after that change that we've made and other divisions have made changes so that, you know, so that I can see where we are now compared to the other divisions. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
And generally, we, we bring you what it looks like for some of our individual employees as well, but we try to do that when we have a better idea of the actual percentage. So we will, certainly, there's a little bit more information that we'll, we'll, to make you aware of the impact on individual employees.
Yeah, getting that information later, once you know more about the actual increase would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
To summarize what we've discussed this afternoon, our preliminary state revenue increase based on the governor's introduced budget is four million six-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred. As we look at a summary of the expenditures that we've gone through this afternoon, a three percent salary increase would cost three million dollars. The increase in VRS rates will cost approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Mandatory FTEs for school counselors will cost four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, as well as mandatory FTEs for special education costing four-hundred-and-eighty thousand. Contractual services increases will cost six-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-seven-hundred. And workers' compensation, general liability, fleet and property insurance, insurances will cost forty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. These preliminary mandatory expenditure increases amount to five million four-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-five, and the preliminary state revenue increase totals four million six-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred. So with only those expenditure increases discussed this afternoon, we're looking at a shortfall of eight-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-five. Just a reminder, this revenue only includes the anticipated increase in state revenue based on the governor's introduced budget and does not include any increase from the localities. On average, the increased support from the localities has been between two and a half to three percent.
The, the, just, I'm sorry, the compensation supplement of three percent, are we committed to that, to, to do the five percent, or is that just the number that we're looking at?
For, for compensation?
Yeah.
We're putting out the figure of three percent. That has to be accomplished over the biennium, but if we don't do as much as other divisions, we'll get further behind in compensation.
Right, so that has to be, that has to be over the biennium twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Correct. And in fact, it has to be in the second year of it, is a definite three percent.
Twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one?
In the second year of the biennium, we've got to give three percent to get the state funding that comes along with it.
Right, so for the, yeah, okay.
But for next year, or do it this year.
Begins June twenty-twenty, July first, twenty-twenty-one.
So that three percent is, is, we're stepping out front with that to be competitive in the region.
Right, because we don't have to do that until twenty-one, twenty-two.
Same thing with the counselors. And I think so, when we're calling it mandatory, I think we need to put like a note there that it's mandatory in the biennium. We're proposing it in the first year.
Again, by this date.
Right.
Required to get the state matching state funds.
And that's, so best-case scenario, we're short by over eight-hundred thousand. And that's assuming, that's assuming no legislation, that's unfunded mandates that comes through.
But that doesn't include any potential increase from the city or the county, so that could potentially be mitigated a little bit.
And that you get the four, four-point-six that the governor's promised.
That's what I'm saying.
But because that's a big chunk, the only way I'm looking at it that you affect that big chunk is through the teacher compensation.
Correct.
Unless you get it from the localities.
Yes, this does not include any increase from the localities at this moment in time. And there's been an average over increase of two and a half to three percent each year, each start of the biennium for the last several bienniums.
What would that number be if it were three percent, let's say? You don't have to answer that now.
I'll get that to you. And then, and then does this mirror our budget of need, these mandatory, how does this fit with the budget of need that we would be presenting later on to the, to the localities?
At the next meeting, we'll be presenting all of our other needs that are not mandatory, which we refer to as essential needs for our school division, especially with some additional staffing, like behavior specialists and some other things. We'll be bringing quite a healthy list of needs at our next meeting.
Am I gonna assume that that might be more than three percent?
Difficult to assume right now, but we will attach a figure to all of the proposed staffing needs that we feel are essential for our school division.
So just to be clear, at this point in time, we're a little over eight-hundred-thousand shortfall, just for mandatory. That doesn't include all of the things that we also need?
Yes, ma'am.
To be strategic, to meet our strategic goals and the-
Or to follow best practice.
Right, exactly.
Right, and to meet the needs-
And the expectations of this community. And the expectations of this community.
And to meet the needs of the ever-changing demographic, which are our students coming to our division with much higher needs, Ls, Speds.
And that's our obligation to serve them.
We'll just take you through the, the timeline of what happens next.
So on January 21st, we'll have our next budget work session, as well as a public hearing. The superintendent's proposed budget will be presented on February 18th. There will be a joint budget work session with our funding partners at a date to be determined in March. Another public hearing will be held on March 3rd, and then the budget will be presented for your approval on March 17th. Superintendent's proposed budget will be presented on February 18th, and then you'll vote on it on March 17th. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I had proposed joint that's not related to this at all, March 13th? Is that not, or is that just something? I had.
The calendar dates for the year, I think, are coming up for adoption by the board, and then it becomes an adopted budget date.
Uh, Dr.
Those are, that's all of the information this evening. I want to thank Ms. Yu and all staff for, for working to bring this information to you. And just to, to reemphasize again, at the beginning of each biennium, I think it's important to really lay out our full needs as a division, so we're not operating at a minimum standard, but we're trying to keep ahead and, and be excellent as a school division.
And I particularly like your approach to taking, you know, a, a two-year mandate and splitting it up because, and, and, and including some of it in the first year, because we've seen that our, that James City County also adopts a biennium budget, and they tend to do that second year in a formulaic approach, you know, as, as a percentage of the whole. And our needs are not that linear, they're just not as, as formulaic. So I think being honest about what year two is going to bring is, is going to be particularly important in this first year of each biennium moving forward.
Any additional comments? Thank you, Dr. Herron, thank you, everyone. The information, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.